I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Review and approve council agenda. I just have one change on under consent agenda, we're gonna cancel I and move J to I.
Is that?
Yeah, that's right. It's the same as item.
Item D.
Same as item D. I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve eleven fourteen nineteen council meeting minutes. Item B, approve two AM liquor license renewal for H R Pestis. Item C, approve electrical inspector service agreement for year twenty twenty. Item D, approve city hall security system proposal. Item E, approve agreement between City of Way Park and City of Saint Joseph for purchase and sharing of a bike share program. Item F, approve massage enterprise license for Heather Bowle. Item G, approve twenty twenty business license renewals. Item H, appoint Jesse Wheeler to accounts receivable, accounts payable person. And item J, approve Flaherty and Hood lobbying proposal.
Move to approve.
I'd like to pull E.
Do you wanna move approve the rest?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike?
Um, item E, I know we had talked about this last year. Um, was that program ever put into use this last year and how was?
Well, we actually applied for a grant and that's what we, the council authorized that, I believe it was sometime in the summer. Um, we found out that we were awarded that, I think it was September-ish timeframe. And so what, essentially what you have in front of you is just the agreement of how it's gonna work between the two cities for being able to use it. So those, we had to, we had to actually purchase everything by the end of October and then everything will be up and running to be able to be effective next year. Yeah. So this agreement just lays out, you know, how each city is going to be responsible for what. Um, so I wrote the agreement, so if you don't like it, you can blame me, but Saint Joseph already approved it and then I had Paul just review it um, to make sure that we had covered everything. So um, it's just a very simple agreement to make sure that we have our bases covered.
Yeah, just kinda briefly reading too, is just, we're gonna split everything fifty fifty.
Yep. Yep.
We'll try it this year, see how it works and at the end of that, then we can review it.
Go from there.
Move to approve E.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, regular agenda items. Twenty twenty budget and levy public hearing. City of Way Park Council will hold a public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it is proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in twenty twenty. The proposed twenty twenty budget is eight million six hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The proposed budget represents an eight point eight increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. The proposed twenty twenty levy is eight million two hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Proposed levy represents a seven point one increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. It is now six thirty-four and the public is invited to speak if there is anyone here for the public hearing on the proposed budget.
Can we speak on our individual taxes yet or not yet?
No, this is the whole budget.
The whole budget.
That will come do, that will come do in March, or April, April, April.
Your.
Your, your valuation comes, well, there will be a meeting in April on your valuation.
Oh, it's not tonight?
No, this is budget. I always say they're not the same, but they are because one affects the other. But the valuation of your property and how that's taxed is in April.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak at the public hearing on the budget?
I was wondering if Keith could maybe summarize kinda what we've done in the work of this and the actual increase to our levy limit is not seven point one percent. So um, so people can understand it maybe a little closer.
Well, let's, let's talk about the budget increase, the eight point eight percent. There uh, there's one position in the, in the budget for twenty twenty that's actually going to be funded on the revenue side port, uh, portion of it, fifty percent of it. So while you see an increase uh, on the revenue side, that's offset by reimbursement that's going to occur on that position. We had another position that uh, as a result of a change, a staffing change or a reduction in hours, the other position that was added in admin was actually covered by that change of going from full-time to part-time on a, on a full-time position. So um, while the numbers on the expense side have increased, there's also revenue offsets uh, that cover those. On the tax levy side, um, the tax rate has actually been flat for five years. This is the first time we've increased it. Part of that had to do with the fact that our, our tax capacity did not show a significant increase uh, from the previous year. And so in order to meet our, our operating expenses, we, we had to put a little bit of an increase on that tax rate percentage.
So our actual, I believe it's called the levy limit that we decided to has been zero for the last five years, but we had to increase it this year because uh, I guess a couple things is one, we wanna catch up a little bit on the capital um, improvements that need to be done for the city. Um, and like you said, it was uh, our tax rates kinda flattened out from last year um, that we expected might've gone up a little bit. But that four percent represents about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in budget for twenty twenty.
Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, yep.
Somewhere in that category, so.
Yep.
Um, and we really didn't wanna increase them again, but we have to at some time. Um, we've given a five-year break. I think we've done a pretty good job with that. Um, but however, once in a great while you do have to. And I hope in the future we don't have to do it again, but this will catch us up.
All right, is there anybody here to speak at the open, at the public uh, hearing for the budget?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed at seven thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven.
Oh, six thirty-seven. Boy, I wanna get outta here or don't wanna get outta here, one or the other. All right. What else do we have to do with that? Nothing, huh?
Uh, just, the final budget um, will be adopted, uh, considered for adoption on December sixteenth.
December sixteenth, yep. All right, item B, consider Chang's massage license suspension revocations. I don't know, uh, Paul, you wanna do that one or?
Yep.
Do I have to open that public hearing? I have to open that public hearing first? Want me to do that?
Yeah.
All right, public hearing is open at six thirty-nine. Oops, I need a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for therapeutic massage enterprise license.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is open at seven thirty, six thirty-nine.
Okay, uh, we have four items that are all related to one another. Uh, they're being listed as four separate agenda items. But to orient everybody on the council and everybody present a little bit, understand what we have going on is an application was received for a therapeutic massage enterprise license and for an individual massage therapist license. These uh, two documents were uh, submitted by a Yi Wen Qing. They were received and reviewed and the uh, police chief, David Bentrude, on October seventeen twenty nineteen made a determination that these license applications did not meet the requirements under ordinance seventy-seven. More specifically, the issue is that Yi Wen Qing, in her applications, stated that she was presently working as a massage therapist at Chang's Massage located at two four six Second Avenue South in the City of Way Park. Uh, also though, she indicated that she had taken over that business, that she was now in charge of it and was seeking a massage enterprise therapist license for Chang's Massage and also her own individual massage therapist license. Uh, important things to recognize about this is the applications include an acknowledgement which was signed by Ms. Qing in which she stated that she read and understood ordinance seventy-seven. One of the requirements under ordinance seventy-seven is that you may not perform massage therapy in the City of Way Park until you have received a license from the City of Way Park. The application, however, indicated that she had already been working for approximately five months at the time that the uh, application was reviewed and denied in October. She indicated that she had began work there sometime in June. Uh, so after that determination was made and that letter was generated, two investigators and officers from Way Park City Police went on the twenty-second of October to Chang's Massage in order to get a better understanding of the situation. That was officers Thompson and Fisher. They arrived there and they met Yi Wen Qing and at that time she was the only person in the building. They had conversations with her that were recorded and then they uh, subsequently put together reports. In that conversation, Ms. Qing indicated that that was correct. She had taken over ownership of Chang's Massage and indicated that she had in fact been working at Chang's Massage for a period of time and that she did not have a license. The investigators looked through the premises. They did find that there was a massage enterprise license that was posted on the wall on, which has an expiration date of December of twenty nineteen. And they also saw that there was an individual massage therapist license that was posted. Uh, that was for an individual uh, who is not any longer apparently the operator or owner of the, of the business. A, forgive my pronunciation, I'll attempt, but a, I believe is a Quilan Zhang. Uh, that individual apparently no longer works in the business. She had transferred it over to Ms. Qing. So as a result of that, we have four different agenda items that have been placed before the council and these regard uh, first of all, considering whether to suspend or revoke the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Chang's Massage. To address that item, I'll get into some of the more specific uh, information to that point. Everything else here is good context for all four. With regard to that issue, the only current license that Chang's Massage has, and by that I mean therapeutic massage enterprise license, is the one that was issued to Ms. Zhang. That's the one that's posted in the building. It's the one that was issued by Way Park. Under ordinance seventy-seven, an individual who holds that license is responsible for everything that takes place there. Also under ordinance seventy-seven, it is not permitted to have employees who are unlicensed massage therapists. That's the situation that we're potentially looking at with respect to Chang's Massage. And for that reason, a recommendation has been made to consider either the suspension or the revocation of the license pursuant to ordinance seventy-seven point nine subdivision one, which authorizes the suspension or revocation of a license for, among other things, fraud, misrepresentation or false statement made in the course of carrying on a licensed occupation, failure to comply with Sydney ordinances or state law, suspension or revocation of a massage therapist license of an employee employed by the licensed premises or conducting the licensed occupation or business in an unlawful manner or in such a manner as to constitute a breach of the peace or to constitute amends to the health, safety or general welfare of the community. Uh, in this situation, it appears that unlicensed individuals have been working there and at least to the public, it's been represented that Ms. Zhang is still operating the building because it's her license that's posted, both her individual license and her enterprise license. So I believe that might be a point for me to pause since that's the first agenda item and I can go into specifics on the others.
All right, uh, is anyone here that wants to talk about that license, just that license now? This is just the enterprise license. This is, this has nothing to do with the massage people or anything else and this is just Ms. Zhang uh, franchise license or license for the building. I'm not sure that's where you wanna be, sir, but if you wanna talk, you're more than welcome. Now, if you, if I could, I, can I have you use a microphone? Otherwise it won't pick it up at home. Your name and address and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ray Henry and I'm from Foley, Minnesota and uh, um, I actually, she's here, right here today and um, she is, she holds a license. She holds both license. Uh, I've been going to uh, the massage uh, place there for uh, over, it's been around ten years. And um, they were in the mall before and then they moved out because somebody else decided to get two places to force them out of there so they could have a massage place also. Um, so that license, she is still uh, going to the place. She has rent on the place. She is occupying the premises. Uh, the one thing that, again, she's had ailments from uh, cancer and um, this has pulled her back from being where she's at. Um, I don't understand uh, some of the licensing part of it, but I will get to that afterwards. Um, but um, you know, so I own a business also and um, not in the massage, of course, or nothing like that. But um, I do have people that come in from uh, schools and um, they actually, we mentor uh, people. And some people have to be mentored to get a license. And that's where I don't understand some of these because I know that um, where he's referring to the people that uh, were um, there working, um, there has a mentorship that is uh, from this other school that I know that uh, that has been, is, is a part of that. So that could be where unlicensed, um, can't get a license till you get it done at school, but if you have a mentorship, then you have to um, you know, have a place that you can actually go to and work and you've worked under someone else. So that might be part of it. Um, the other part is, is that um, I know that uh, it's been kind of a, a, a chaotic deal because of the cancer and because of the things that were going on. It's their livelihood. It's what they do to make their living. And um, I know that uh, you know, they um, came for the license after the fact, only because of the fact that they said, well, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna be around that long or whatnot, so you, you have to apply for a license in, in Way Park to get that. So I think that's where some of this is, confusion came on. Um, they're not great with English, so Mandarin, they're great with Mandarin. Um, you know, and I'm not real great with Mandarin, but I, you know, I can speak kind of a broken English with them. Um, I, I don't think they quite understood the contract that they, or the agreement they signed. I'm gonna say that because um, they were in the mall and they signed an agreement there and that was a two-week notice as all the mall had to give them to kick them out. And they didn't know that. And so I helped them out with that to find a place. So um, in their uh, in their view of things, I don't think they did understand fully what they did sign or what their application was.
And so is it my understanding that, that this building is for sale now, that business is for sale and a new owner will take place?
Actually, uh, what's happened is the um, the, the building itself, they're, they're leasing. They have a, a two-year lease or whatnot.
Business.
The business. The business part, they're, they're basically gonna do is, is sign up an agreement with um, she's not out looking for a new owner, so to say. She has no choice but to have someone else take over her uh, position in time here. And again, she can oversee it because she's going to the doctor. She's not in the hospital, as you see, she's here today. Um, so she can be there at her business, you know, on and off. It, it is very tiring for her, of course. I don't know if anybody here has went through cancer or uh, been through uh, that type of thing, but at the same time, I know you have people that you know that have. And it's very wearing on a person, but at the same time, um, I think that she will um, be there. She will support it. She'll do whatever you guys recommend for her to keep uh, not only the license, but to keep someone in there doing the massages because it's not about just a license, it's about their livelihood.
All right, anybody else? Chief?
As it relates specifically to the enterprise license, I could clarify my reason for denial. The um, we had no information of anything illicit going on at the massage parlor. However, and I, forgive me, the, the purchaser of the business is, what was the name again?
My understanding is that Yi Wen Qing. Have I said that correctly? Is that, is that approximately right?
Ms, last name is pronounced Chin?
Yes, I N G Shin.
Shin, okay. Did not provide uh, adequate financial records to be to, in my opinion, to justify this purchase. I had, there was no purchase agreement. I typically, when a business is sold or transfers, there's some type of a purchase agreement. I, I didn't have any of that. Um, she did not provide the financial statement that would justify the assumption of a business lease and lighting and those types of things. Now, maybe it's possible that they can provide that, but I did not receive that. So uh, based on what I did receive, there was not an economic means by which they could, that she could assume that business uh, in, in my view. I, I did meet with uh, I'm sorry, your name? Uh, when?
Woody.
Woody. And I did try to, you know, explain to him what I needed. That I, I needed some historical record as far as profit and loss, asset and liability for the business to be able to make an informed decision um, or to approve. And I did not receive that. I did receive a copy of uh, the owner's tax return. Uh, but um, I, I didn't get the, the two or three years of profit and loss that I was looking for or an asset liability statement for the business. There was no purchase agreement to transfer ownership. Uh, there, there was nothing formal in that regard.
All right, council, got any questions, comments? We need an action on this one before we move to the next one.
Well, the public hearing is still open.
I know, but you have, you didn't talk yet.
Right.
Is this one of the previous ones that we've dealt with? This is not one of the previous?
No.
This is a new application for uh, someone wanting to take the business over, I'm assuming.
What?
But however, was operating without the proper licensing under someone else's business license.
So the first question, to my knowledge, excuse me, to my knowledge, this is not a business that has come before the Way Park City Council before. Other massage parlors that we've dealt with definitely were separate enterprises. Uh, the way that it seems to uh, have developed is that the license that was in effect, license that's valid for the enterprise is the one that's held by Quilian Zhang or Zhang. That's the license that was up for renewal. It would go until December of twenty nineteen. When a renewal was offered, the, or you know, some version of an application, it was in the name of a new individual who had been stating that they have now taken over the business. And in that application, they identify a single person as employed there. And then for that line, just the word self was written. The single individual who was identified as employed is an unlicensed individual. That unlicensed individual was spoken to by the investigators with Way Park and confirmed that she had been performing massage services at the business. At the time that the investigators were there on the twenty-second of October, there was nobody else in the building when they first arrived and when they first had conversations. There was no one overseeing that individual who was unlicensed. Later in the course of the investigators' time, on October twenty-second at the business, another individual arrived who was identified as the significant other or partner of the unlicensed individual, uh, Ms. Yi Wen Qing. That individual also does not have a license. So throughout the entire time that the investigators were there on the twenty-second, no licensed individual was in the building. The only license that was listed was for uh, Ms. Quilian Zhang who was not there. And from the communications that took place, the investigators were led to understand that she was no longer working there in any capacity. That the business had completely been transferred over to Ms. Qing. That's my understanding from the police report and from reading the recorded statements.
Okay, so in a nutshell, she thought she was taking the business over, didn't come in for the proper licensing to begin with, continued to do business under the Zhang.
Enterprise license.
Enterprise license until she went in, applied and found out no one was licensed or there was no change.
That's what the documentation indicates and that's what was confirmed in the uh, statements that were taken and recorded.
All right, Mr. Henry, do you have anything more to say?
Yes, um, well, a couple different things. One is that um, I know that they were, she was there, uh, just like I hold a dealer's license and, and I'm licensed for, you know, taking care of automobiles and so on and so forth. And if somebody works or is, you know, under me, I don't have to be there for them to do the job, but I, I'm not trying to, you know, to water this down or anything like that. But um, you know, I, I think that um, you know, going back to the first uh, um, you know, first in, inquiry for the licensing and, and looking for uh, a financial statement and/or a business plan to uh, carry through with the business, um, that's something that, you know, even myself, I would need my accountant or somebody with a legal background to lay it out for a bank or for another business to look at. Uh, so, and I'm willing to help them get through this. So uh, I'm saying that is, is that um, uh, you know, that uh, put on record or um, because they are the type of people that when they say they'll do it, they'll do it, otherwise they'll follow your um, you know, your recommendations or, or what you say to do. So with that, you know, I, I definitely understand that, you know, that she probably doesn't have the capabilities to do a financial statement. Lot of us here don't. I mean, we'd have to be an accountant or somebody else to do it for us and we can give them what we have, but we just won't lay it out the way you need to see it. So that's one part of it. The other part is, is that, you know, when we look at ourselves as a, as a business owner or a business uh, um, you know, manager, uh, you know, we don't always say it the way we mean it. And I think that's what happened here. It's clear that um, she felt that she was in as the business owner because she was gonna be taking over licensing or putting her licensing in. She is licensed in California. Uh, when she came here, she, she uh, prior, they said that, you know, you can be licensed in California and your license will actually uh, qualify in Minnesota. Well, it will, but in the city, you need a license and that's the difference in our interpretation or how we, you know, we perceive it to be. So I'm sure that that's some of the confusion here. And again, we have a, a, a language barrier, you know? So I, I think that, you know, that, and I understand the law. I'm not trying to shirt the law or anything else. I understand that. Um, and I do understand that uh, Ms. Chang, she's, she's willing to, you know, do what she has to do to keep her business because they have no income, no livelihood. They're not taking county aid. They're not taking anything from the city. They're paying their taxes. They're, they're taking, you know, they're doing what they need to do as citizens. So I'm just saying that uh, if there's a way to work through this and you have a great recommendation for it on how you would like to see it done, um, that's what we'll accomplish or that's what we'll do.
All right, thanks.
Just wanted, excuse me, wanted to just clarify. So your first item that you have is the consideration of suspending or um, the revocation of the enterprise license for Chang's Massage and the purpose for
That license.
Just for that license and the, the reason why you would be considering that or the, or the violation is because you have an unlicensed therapist working in the massage business. That's the, that's the first item that's being considered right now. I just wanted to clarify 'cause all of them are related.
Is only valid for another twenty-nine days.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Can we act on these individually as they come up here?
Yeah, we have to.
You have to.
We should. We need to close the public, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for section A of this, I believe it is.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at six fifty-nine.
I'd make a motion to suspend the license until proper paperwork and uh, background is given over to the chief. A suggestion for the person would be to possibly go to the Small Business Administration. A suggestion for the person would be to possibly go to the Small Business Administration over in the Coburn busy. They can get this to you and help you with this, get the license faster. We cannot have unlicensed people. We've had plenty of problem in the past with this type of business in town. So, we are a little bit tough because of it. But my motion at this time would be to suspend it as of tomorrow until the proper paperwork can be given to the chief for approval at the proper license.
Just to clarify,
Time frame.
You're, I would recommend that you do a timeframe with it only because what you're, what you're really taking action on is not the transfer of ownership from one person to the next. What you're taking action on right now is the revocation of the
License that's already there.
Of the license for Chang's massage currently because of the, because of the person working there without a license.
If I put a timeframe on it,
The next item.
They can come back at any time during that timeframe, apply for a license to take over that business then? Is that right?
They, whatever the timeframe that you put on that, no one can come back in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, because you and I have talked about this, until after that license suspension period is over underneath that name. Correct?
My understanding from the, from the way the ordinance is written with a suspension would be that the city council or the administrative arm of it at least would not take any action or consideration. Could somebody submit an application and have it sitting on a desk with the understanding it's not going to be touched for two weeks, a month, whatever the timeframe is? I think they would probably be free to create the application, but no action would be taken by the city government or any arm of it until that suspension period would conclude.
Conclude.
So it wouldn't be as if, let's, for hypothetical, let's say that a suspension is done for a month from today so that nothing can happen until the third or the second of January. If a person came in on the first of January or the 29th of December with a complete application and handed it over, it wouldn't be as if that would get tossed into the trash and they were told, "Come back on the third." But the third would be the first instance in which that application could be taken under consideration, just to clarify that part of it.
I'll put a 30-day suspension. After the 30 days, it will be reviewed. If there's any violations at that time, I would put a permanent revocation of the license into effect. Can't do that?
I'm
Thirty day, I'd like to give her a 30-day suspension right now.
Okay, so do you want to go till December 31st?
Why don't you just go till the end of the license? That's December 31st.
Okay.
First 2019?
We'll do that, to the end of the license. At that time, if they come in with the proper paperwork.
They just have to reapply. They have to reply anyway.
Right.
So I would just take care of the suspension and leave it at that. And then you can go on to your other items to address those issues.
All right, till December 31st of 2019.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I think it could have been 10 days and they could have gotten it straightened out.
My question would be, I haven't voted yet, but I still have a question here. Can we put, just put them on a probation? In other words, allow them to work and get us this paperwork by the 31st? And if it's not?
Voted, who voted on that?
Nobody yet.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we did.
No, I haven't voted yet.
Oh, Rick hasn't.
I just got a question and I want to answer.
I said nay.
Instead of cutting her, because this cuts her business off. Nobody can work there and get money anymore.
I don't believe that you have that within your ordinance. The ordinance is written as giving the options to suspend the license or to revoke the license. Suspension meaning that for some period of time, it will not be usable or you can't, you can't operate the business. And then after that time period has ended, the business could conceivably continue to operate. With the context of this particular suspension, of suspending until the end of the license, that being the proposal, the impact of that would be that, you know, you suspend it until that period of time, well, then someone would have to reapply. But a probationary period or some sort of mechanism like that just doesn't exist in the ordinance. Certainly, it could be something that the council will consider instituting into a subsequent amendment to the ordinance, but the current one doesn't allow for that.
And if, and if she loses that license tonight, all that, that whole business closes for, till the end of the month.
Potentially forever.
Well
Well, till the license, well, maybe, but somebody will apply for the license.
The question that you might want to ask, and I know you're going to want to call the question at some point, is is she gonna, is she currently able to work? Does she have the ability to have any licensed therapists that have the ability to work under that current license? Because right now, the only
Doesn't right now.
The ones that have that, and that's the question, is, is she capable? Because it would only be able to be her or somebody else that would be licensed within the city of Wade Park that would be able to work at that point.
Unless there's somebody else.
My understanding from the paperwork that was submitted is that the only individual who had an individual therapist license was also the holder of the massage enterprise license. That at the time of this investigation, of this application, everything that's happened in the last few months here, no individual was identified as having an individual license and employed there. So the issue would turn on whether or not there, either the Ms. Zhang, the original enterprise license holder, if she's able to work, then certainly that would be a licensed individual who could work there. If another individual in the city of Wade Park who has an individual license was hired in, that would be an option. The third realm that's up for consideration later in this set of items is whether or not Ms. Qing, Yi Wen Qing, if her license is going to be approved or not. And if her license were approved, then perhaps that would be the individual who would be able to continue the work at that establishment.
Okay. Question then? I think I can still ask, can't I?
Oh, yeah.
You can't have discussions.
If the date was changed, say to the December 15th to the end of the, is that possible to do?
Make sure I understand. You're asking if the suspension was to go from today until the 15th of December?
No, from the 15th of December
Okay.
Till December 31st.
That would be the period where the suspension would take place?
Right.
Okay. And then what's the end to that question?
But I think the prelude to that would be that if somebody else could get a license in between that time.
Someone else get a license or they could properly come in with the proper documents to get the proper licensing in that period of time to take hers over. She could just leave, the new person could come in.
Make sure I understand. Is your suggestion then that it would be sort of like a, is the suggestion to be something like a conditional suspension? That they're going to have two weeks of time where the business is open and operating in which to try and pull the paperwork together or end or acquire the employees that they need? And if that is not accomplished by the 15th, then a suspension would take place.
Right.
I believe that that would be within the authority under the ordinance. That is something you could conceivably create. Is a suspension that would trigger upon a condition.
You're going to make a new motion then? All right.
You have a motion?
Yeah, I got a motion and a second to suspend this until their license till December 31st. I have, who had yet an eye on that? And Mike? I'm going to vote nay on that so Mike can make his new motion.
What about Vic? What did you vote?
Vic, I voted no. Vic was no. I knew Vic and Frank were no's.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to share and make a different motion then, seeing that these guys.
Before we do that, could I just make a comment here? Not one of us up here is a business consultant. Not one of us knows a whole lot about starting a business and running a business. And I think giving advice or making decisions on what you believe a business is going to operate with and what she can do in that period of time is inappropriate. It's for us to make a decision and it's for them to take the action. So if you're saying we're going to get it done in 15 days or 30 days, how do you know you can do that in 15 or 30 days? Not going to happen.
I don't. We're just giving them an option.
We're giving them
I think the option needs to be give them enough time to go out and get it done and then come back and see us.
Well, this will put a little pressure on them to get it done, I think. And then if it doesn't get done, that license is no good at the end of the year anyway. And she wasn't going to renew that license. It was going to be renewed by a new individual. So that person in that timeframe can get their records together and come in and apply for the new license.
So my new motion would be to give them to the 15th of December and suspend after that if, in fact, the proper licensing has not been acquired or applied for till December 31st of 2019. I think that would be proper, right?
You have to, you have to act on this particular person's massage enterprise license, that this individual, not on whether or not somebody else comes in. So if you have a timeframe and
I'm saying until the proper
No, just say you're going to suspend it as of December 15th.
You give a timeframe if you're going to do a suspension. You give a timeframe. We're suspending the license from this date to this date.
From September 15th to, from December 15th to December 31st.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do.
Plain suspension, 15th to the 31st.
Of December.
Of December 2019.
All right, now is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's four to one. All right, now we're on to the second one.
That's the best we can do.
That's not bad. Now we're on a second one.
All right, second item that was on the agenda here is the suspension or revocation of the individual massage therapist license for Quilian Zhang. We've already gone through the general, you know, fact pattern that surrounds this. This one is included because all of the licenses under the ordinance are at least theoretically up for the concept of a revocation or a suspension. The concept here would be that because the enterprise is operated by Quilian Zhang, who is the only holder of an individual therapist license, that either she's going to have the enterprise license dealt with through a revocation and a suspension, or she's going to have both that and her individual license dealt with through a revocation or a suspension. Basis being that she's the individual in charge of the enterprise, she's the licensed individual, and she's allowing unlicensed individuals to work in the establishment. So essentially, the concept is that this would be an additional sanction towards Ms. Quilian Zhang. Just to clarify, if Quilian Zhang's individual license is suspended or revoked, and just theoretically is suspended or revoked as of right now, today, then there's no licensed individual who runs the establishment, and that's a requirement under the ordinance. So there would be an impact, a domino effect, back toward the enterprise license if the individual license is dealt with in a way which, which causes it to be unusable and valid, revoked, suspended before that suspension period. I'm just kind of preempting an item that I theorize could come up.
I screwed up. Public hearing was open at 7:11. All right, does anybody here speak on that? I think we've heard all the arguments for and again. So I think if you want to close the public hearing, you can.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed at 7:12. Counsel, your wishes on that license?
No, she is the present owner.
Yep.
Just applying for herself, is that correct?
That's correct.
She's not applying.
No, she's not applying. She has a license till the end of the year.
She has a responsibility as the owner of that
Oh, because of letting someone operate with the
Auto license in her place of business. That's what's, that's the issue before you tonight.
I'll make the same motion.
Want to repeat that?
For the individual?
Make for the individual.
Chang, oh, no, Zhang.
Ms.
Quilian Chang.
Quilian Chang.
Yep, Ms. Chang. Let her license be suspended as of the 15th or the 16th?
Fifteenth last night.
You had 15th on the last one.
Okay, 15th to the 31st of December 2019.
Your second? Eyes for lack of second. Somebody else want to do something?
I will make a motion
Aye.
That the license be suspended for 90 days.
Is that it?
Effective immediately.
Your second to that? We make another motion. I understand that with, you gave her permission to leave a building, an establishment open, and if you take her license away, you basically should have went back to the first one and just closed the business.
Right, that's my problem with the motion.
And her license expires January, or December 31st. Her personal license expires December 31st.
Well, then I'd make the motion to December 31st.
Wait, but hold on a minute. Paul, can you clarify? Do individual massage license for therapists have to be renewed annually?
I can take a look at the ordinance and I can verify that one. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I do have the ordinance up on my computer. Why don't you give me just a moment to take a look?
I think they do.
They are renewed.
I just
I just wanted to verify.
Individual licenses renew annually.
Yeah, I just signed some.
I wanted to just make sure that I, that we understood that.
To me, you could just leave and go until the end of the year.
You don't have to take any action.
She doesn't have a place to do business in for that same time period.
She's got 15 days period.
Previous portion.
Somebody want to move to?
She can go somewhere else.
Do nothing?
To do nothing, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we do nothing at this time with this item.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Past four to one. So you can stay there for 15 days is what it is right now. You understand that. And hopefully you can convey that so that gets done. All right, we got another one, and my battery's down to 7%.
Mine's at nine.
I got a backup for you.
Got charger there?
You're going to put it on paper.
Third item that is, that's under this
Public hearing's open at 7:16. Okay, go ahead.
All right, the third item that we have under this agenda point, this is the public hearing to consider the individual massage therapist license application that was submitted by Yi Wen Qing. To clarify, as we stated in the earlier information that was, that was shared, Yi Wen Qing does not have a therapist license in the city of Wade Park. So this is not an application to renew an individual therapist license. It's an application in the first instance for a Wade Park City massage therapist license. That application was received and reviewed. One of the items that was listed there in the application under the section about employment, Ms. Qing stated that she was employed as a massage therapist at Chang's Massage. Gave a start date of June 17. Also, that individual therapist application includes a section in there where the individual signs saying that they have read and understand Ordinance 77. Ordinance 77 states that you may not perform massage therapist services within Wade Park without a license. So a question is whether or not that license application for Ms. Qing would be accepted or denied. This is not a question of whether it would be revoked or suspended because there is no license in existence to suspend or revoke.
Public hearing is open. Again, I don't know if, if you want to say something, go ahead. If you don't, that's fine, counsel.
I got a question for you.
You can close the public hearing at 7:17.
Second. That was a motion.
Yep. Okay, front mic.
Chief, if in fact that, I don't know if you reviewed this application thoroughly, if in fact she was not employed, would she have been accepted for acceptance under the massage licensing background checks?
I, I don't, to be fair, I don't recall exactly all of her education. I'd have to look at the file. I guess the, the, one of the arguments for denial is, in my mind, is the fact that she operated for several months without a license. And so that, that is the issue.
I understand.
If that hadn't occurred, if she was just coming in, this is the first time we had gotten her application, I don't remember the other issues. I'd have to look at the file to make sure.
And a lot of it seems to be a bit of a communication gap. So that's my issue with that.
Her license if, if all paperwork comes back positive.
That's why I'm
And then you have some of them that are doing illegal things?
Go ahead if you got something.
But that is not the case here.
Uh, I guess at this time, what I'd like to do is make a motion to approve her license if all the necessary paperwork and backgrounds come in. However, if they do not come in properly, the license will be revoked.
Not revoked, just
No.
Or she won't be issued a license.
Do your words carefully.
Yep, yep. Well, you gotta help me. There you go, you got it.
I am. I am.
You got it, no.
But, I guess-
So, that would be the motion, that, uh, we approve it contingent on all, uh, background and, uh-
But, if I could, and I, maybe I don't wanna step into Paul's lane here, but she needs to have a, a license, an enterprise licensed establishment to tie her license to.
She has that for fifteen days.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, she would have the other one to tie it to for fifteen days.
And, and the next, and the next thing on the agenda is to give her that enterprise license.
So, um, that would be my motion, as long as everything comes back correctly, then she would be issued a license.
My comments earlier probably are more apropos for the fourth position, uh, I'll just say that now, that there, there, there was not adequate financial information provided.
Can someone give us the motion back?
Yeah.
Um, from what I understand, Mike, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, that Councilmember Lindquist, uh, made a motion, um, to approve, um, the, uh, massage therapist license for Ms. Ching, and I apologize if I didn't get that right. Um, contingent upon, upon a, a successful background check completion and approval by the police chief is what it would involve.
Regular license pro- process. Mike made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. All right, one more, number four.
Ken, did you second that?
Public hearing, considering the therapeutic massage enterprise license application for Chang's Massage submitted by Ms. Zing. Uh, public hearing is open at seven twenty one.
All right, so on our fourth item, for, uh, considering whether or not to accept the application for the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Chang's Massage, um, just, we need to recap a little bit of where I believe we've gotten to with the votes. At present, Chang's Massage has a license that runs until the fifteenth of December. On the fifteenth of December, that license becomes a suspended license, uh, until the end of the month. We have an individual, uh, license for Quillian Zhang, which there was no action taken on, so the current owner of Chang's Massage is a licensed individual. She's presumably still an employee based upon being the owner of that, of that operation as well. If we have for Ms. Yuen Ching, her application at present for taking over ownership, that application does not identify anybody who is licensed. Ms. Ching's license is conditional based upon whether or not all of the paperwork that needed to be submitted is submitted. If that's the case, then Ms. Ching would be a licensed individual who would be able to assume and take over the business and would therefore be able to qualify for the massage enterprise license. If her application is not ultimately accepted between now and the end of, of this, uh, period of the fifteenth, then there would still conceivably be Ms. Zhang, Ms. Quillian Zhang, if she's an employee and who's licensed, then Ms. Ching could conceivably take over the business. But one issue is whether or not there's a licensed individual who will be working for that enterprise. Second item, as was already referenced by, by Chief Bentrude, is that he did not receive financial data that was adequate to justify taking over that business. There is a financial requirement, there is no documentation that supported it. So the question is whether or not this application at present is one that's going to be accepted, uh, or alternatively, if, if the council would recommend a different course of action.
Question for you. If we take no action, nothing would happen.
We need to reapply.
She gets, she has no license, she has no enterprise license.
No.
Right.
If the council takes no action-
But if you listen to the chief from previous comments, well, she's lacking in some paperwork and things. So, I guess maybe I can try it, is-
You wanna take action on this because you, you gotta either put this up or down, because this is, this is a license for the establishment.
Right.
Yeah.
It's gotta go up or down.
We can-
But you can still, no.
We can take action to deny, but she just has to reapply and get her paperwork in order, correct?
Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, if, if the application is denied, uh, you know-
Lack of paperwork.
Lack of paperwork, lack, et cetera, that wouldn't preclude an individual from trying again.
Yeah, reapply.
Which, which in reality, in this case, if everything went perfect, and we know it never does, the fifteenth is when that license is up, the sixteenth we have a council meeting. She could reapply for, at that council meeting and be back in business.
Yep.
All right, public, anything else for the public?
Lot of stuff to get done before, that doesn't usually happen in two weeks.
Yeah, anything else for the public hearing?
I just feel, and forgive me, maybe I'm con- confusing, I just wanna make sure, um, because I know we're talking about some revisions to our ordinance as well. And I think one of those, and I wanna make sure that it's not in the current ordinance, but rather in the proposed ordinance, in that if we deny a-
That's true.
Enterprise license, they're prohibited from reapplying for, I believe it's a year.
I think it is, yeah, you're right, could be.
I don't know if it's denied, or if it's revoked, or-
I think that's revoke or suspension.
I just wanna make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for-
Good, good question.
Yeah.
Then we do nothing and let them reapply.
Mm-hmm. I think we can do that, I just thought it was.
But we're not under the new ordinance as of yet.
Yeah, but the old one might've been there too. I don't have, oh, I got it, I got the new one, I don't have one.
Well, under required action, you don't give us a lot of options.
You don't get a lot of options.
Got problems.
Well, you have to vote it up or down.
Yep. I'm down to five percent.
I have, I got a backup for you. I got a backup right here.
Yes, uh, I, I think I found it, it's on, um, I don't, uh, check that. I, I think subdivision four of, uh, chapter seventy seven, under seventy seven point five, subdivision four, item- ten. The applicant has, this is a denial, potential reason to deny. The applicant has been denied a license under this ordinance within the preceding twelve months.
Okay.
Are we, it, within, with that language, uh, it's, it's to the discretion of the council, on whether it's ultimately going to be an issue, it may be a grounds.
I, I, you're correct, it does say, the city may deny issuance, so-
Yeah, so it would be a consideration.
Some discretion there.
So we could deny it with the, with the understanding that-
All the paperwork is not-
All the paperwork gets in and she gets back in.
As long as you guys remember that.
Do we have, do we have a motion on the floor, don't we?
No, no, we do not.
No, no, we do not.
I'd like to make a motion to deny, understanding that she can reapply when they have the paperwork in.
We did, seven twenty seven.
Oh, that, that's something.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the application till she has, all the paperwork is in and, and the chief has approved.
Is that clean enough for everybody? I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously on that one. All right, have you got that all figured out, so you can explain that?
Paul, I'm so happy that you came, Adrian, between the three of us.
All right, we are done with that. Item C, Unbank, I think that's pretty simple, but I gotta get a public hearing sometime.
Yes. I can, do you find it, Rick? I got it.
Uh, please take notice that the Wake Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the second day of December twenty nineteen at six thirty PM or soon thereafter at the Wake Park City Hall located at nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, Wake Park, Minnesota, to consider the twenty nineteenth currency exchange license renewal for Unbank Company LLP located at one forty seven Division St- Street, Wake Park, Minnesota, five six three eight seven pursuant to Minnesota statute five thirty, fifty-three A dot zero four. Anyone wishing to comment on this license should do so dated this fifth day of November twenty nineteen. Is there anyone here for Unbank? This is a public hearing, it's open at seven twenty-nine. I go fast enough, I have enough battery power yet.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed at seven thirty. Uh, Chief, we, I take it we have no problems with Unbank, we never do?
No, we're good.
All right?
I'm gonna move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. All right, consider tyranny audiovisual service proposal.
Um, what you have before you, um, is a proposal, um, to do two things. Um, what we had found out, um, from Charter, um, is that we have, well, we have two channels. We have our public access channel, and then we have our government channel. Our government channel is run by our staff. Um, for many years, for unbeknownst to us, the Charter has managed our public access channel, um, which is channel one seventy-eight, and our government channel, just for information purposes, um, is one eighty-one. Um, Charter is no longer going to be, uh, servicing, um, our public access channel, um, effective December thirty first. They let us know, um, that if we want to continue to provide that public access channel, of which, um, we can move it into our system, it would be on the same system, it'd be two different channels. We can manage the content separately. Um, typically, what you see on your public access channel is more of your community-based things versus your government kinds of related things. Um, some suggestions that we had that we thought might be good is some of the programming for the amphitheater or some of the things for the convention center might be good things that could be utilized, uh, where we can really utilize that channel for those kinds of things. In addition to this, um, we also have a need under our current system, uh, because of the Windows ten, uh, we have to make some upgrades to our propos- to our system, uh, to comply with those things for it to continue to work. Um, so what you have before you, um, to complete all of that work is a request from Tyranny, who has, uh, done all of our upgrades to our, um, to our, uh, software. Um, fifteen thousand two eighty-four, uh, forty-four, that's supposed to be a period and not a, a comma, so, um, excuse me for that. Um, and so that would be paid for out of our franchise fees, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Consul, any questions, or your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Well, it's the two things, it is, yeah.
So are they gonna maintain this throughout the year then?
Oh, we do, we do then, they're not gonna do anything.
All of the other cities do it.
After December thirty first, it's gone, if we don't do anything. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Who made the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Now, further discussion?
So this will go on then for, as long as, as long as we do it after that?
And the important thing for us was to make sure that it was done on our existing software, so that it's not having to manage two different ones, so it's a lot easier for it to handle.
Cause we do our own already on-
Yeah, we do our government ourselves.
So, okay, okay.
I would motion a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item D, consider administrative assist- associate hiring process and revised job description.
Well, earlier in the agenda, you approved Jessie to the accounts payable receivable clerk position. With that, I have a now opening for her administrative assistant position. Um, I did remove the accounts payable clerk information out of her, out of that administrative assistant and added in some other duties that we've taken from the clerk position. Um, and the clerk still has the elections, but I need another assistant in the office to do elections, which is a great person for this position, along with some other clerical duties within that. Um, and so what I'm asking, um, for approval tonight, um, is one, to begin the hiring process for that administrative associate position, and to actually approve the revised job description. Nothing has changed as far as the points or the pay grade for that, uh, that was verified with Baker Tilly.
My question for you real quick is, we approve this, um, are we hiring, uh, a different position for finance officer?
No, not at this time, nope.
Not at this time, not at this time, no.
Nope.
So in other words-
We're, we're hiring an HR person yet, and we're hiring a administrative assistant.
Yeah.
That's what we're hiring in today's world.
I understand why it's confusing.
I know what, no, right now we're-
So we're hiring that financial-
Nope, we have a finance director.
Yes.
He will still be our finance director.
And we have someone who's interested in managing the company.
And we have a clerk that's still going to be, well, we're, you know, we're shifting a little bit of things around in our office, but, um, she will be learning, uh, the financial, the finance director position and will determine at a later time. So not at this time, there is nothing else being considered. It, this is really just filling, backfilling the position that we have available.
Look.
We got a motion and a second?
You do?
Ew, that was discussion.
Who, who was that?
Was it, I don't know.
You don't have a motion yet, but I'll give you a motion.
Dang.
I'll move to approve, if it's not covered.
Okay, Frank, you're making the motion, okay?
Second.
Vic?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and hey, I got four percent left.
Make it, yeah.
Bad, huh? All right, approve bills.
I'm moved to pay the bills, I just got one question, and I guess now I should ask Bill.
He's seconding, he just moved it.
I just moved it, I don't know if we had a second.
Mike?
Mike, okay.
It's for a Mastech rental from Brock White for forty-five hundred dollars, what is it?
Brock White?
Mastech?
Yeah. Mastech is a bonding agent.
You know what, Frank, I can ask the question and email you guys, I don't know what that is, to be honest with you.
Something I do on a floor someplace or something? All right, all in favor, pay the bills?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. At the, uh, public input tonight, we had, uh, individuals there to talk about the massage parlor, uh, that you've seen on TV tonight, uh, they were there for that. We don't normally take action, that was already an agenda item, so that's why that came to the agenda tonight. Also, there was an individual there who was trying to sell a business on Third Street between, uh, Fourth and Fifth Avenue, and has got a complaint again, uh, that he can't sell his business because of Pogansky Motors. So, Consul, what are your wishes, uh, to direct staff to do?
I would like to make a direction for the staff to step up, get this problem taken care of. We've been dealing with this person for years, we changed the ordinance in order to help maybe clear up the problems there. It, to me, hasn't been taken care of. When you drive by there, the cars still remain, we had picture proof tonight of the type of vehicles that are there. I would like to have, uh, our staff step up, uh, and maybe bring back Mr. Pogansky to one of our next council meetings to express our disappointment in the way they're doing their operation over there.
Would it, would it be appropriate to offer an amendment here? Um, that we-
Oh, we're not making motions, we're just directing staff at this time, so if you wanna throw something out, throw it out, now's the time.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that would direct-
We don't move on anything like this tonight.
Pardon?
This was done at input, we don't make motions, we direct staff, but we don't make motions tonight.
Oh, okay, then we won't make one.
Well, just bring up what you want, bring up what you want.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important to get Paul involved to make sure that the actions we have available to us, um, he's had an opportunity to look off, make some recommendation, so we can solve this problem once and for all. We've been going through this, I've been asking for the last two years. What are we doing about this business and operation to bring it into compliance with ours, with our zoning ordinances? And it just continues to go on, it just incrementally gets worse and worse and worse. So I would like to see Paul involved with telling us, um, from a legal perspective, what are our options? What can we do, and then to get staff involved to try to carry some of that out.
Cause we've, we've, we've taken his-
It was pretty good most of the summer, it's just, when a car lands there-
That's what he does.
It's hard to be there, it could've been there for a day.
That's what he does, so, anyway, that's the direction, to see what we can do with that. His conditional use permit has been revoked.
Yep, I should, I should put myself on the record that, uh, that city staff have reached out to me on this topic. Uh, they did make a request for me to look into it, that was recently, within the last couple of weeks, and I don't wanna make it sound like it was yesterday. Uh, I will admit that I've been rather swamped with some obligations, but I do understand this is an important item and that, that I need to get involved and, and help to resolve.
Yes.
But I do want, just put on record that your city staff has reached out to me, that this is one where, where I'm taking responsibility for at least these last few weeks of not having a response back, so, step, laying on a grenade of sorts.
It is a major problem, because when we have people that are trying to sell a business and their main reason to be turned down is of what type of business is going on, they called it a junkyard, which it does look like, um, we have to step up our, whatever you wanna call it, to get that, uh, situation taken care of.
All right, that's all I got.
If, if I could comment, uh, I'll report back at the next-
If, if I could comment, uh, I'll report back at the next available work session. Presumably the, uh.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth with results and hopefully a game plan. My intent is to, uh, take inventory over there. I'm just, I'm gonna talk to, with the owners, I'm gonna go over and, uh, see if there's any other vehicles, like the one that wasn't noted in the picture, that I can take at least some immediate action on, on the junkers. Part of what, um, kind of the struggle is with this particular business is, I don't think it would be nearly as much of, of an issue if the vehicles that are there were newer, nicer. But they're not. I mean, they're, they're older vehicles for the most part. But the ordinance doesn't differentiate between the nineteen eighties golden maroon Cadillac that's there and a new one. So that's, that's part of, part of the issue at hand. Unfortunately, we don't really have a way to, at least I know of, and that's what is gonna be worth some more investigating, to cap the number of vehicles necessarily. But there are other aspects that I think, and we can, uh, take some additional actions on there.
Alright, thanks.
I'll keep, uh, Mr. Weitashik in the loop as well.
Yep, thanks. Shawna?
I don't have anything.
Alright, we are, oh, Terry, you got anything?
Sure, I do.
I almost let you die tonight.
No, you almost slipped by me. Uh, a little presentation tonight, uh, um, every year our company does, uh, two fundraisers. Uh, we do one in the spring for fighting cancer and one in the fall for fighting hunger. This year, we incorporated a client aspect to that, uh, in that we had a cornhole tournament, uh, where we invited people over for potluck and had a cornhole tournament. I'm proud to say that, uh, you know, we had some good representation from Wake Park. We didn't get them to the cornhole board, so we had to, uh, recruit from the crowd. Uh, so the closest thing we had for, as a Wake Park representative was Mr. Kim Lucas, uh, who was a proud Wake Park resident. Uh, and, uh, he teamed up with, uh, one of our, uh, employees. And lo and behold, the Wake Park team won the cornhole tournament. So we have this traveling trophy, uh, that we'd like to present. Uh, you're the beanbag champions of the first, uh, cornhole against hunger. Congratulations, you beat the Sock Rapids team.
We knew that, that would happen.
The losing team of What's Got in Olson, so, uh, congratulations. I hope you probably, probably display this and thank you for your generosity, uh, those that came and even some of those that didn't.
Terry, a quick question for you. Do you take donations towards the hunger, or?
Yes.
What, what does it go to, or who do you?
You know, I, I think, uh, Mike, they all go to the Salvation Army.
Uh, um, I can do that some other time. I know where you're going. Okay.
We'll do it next time.
Thank you.
Alright.
John?
Nothing additional, sir.
Chief?
Sir.
Where am I at? Oh, Adrian, you get it. You got anything, huh? Come on, come on.
I got a lot of work.
Carla? Keith? Paul?
No.
Alright, we are adjourned at seven forty-three.